I'd like to call to order the regular city commission meeting for the city of Deerfield Beach for April 7th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. While we normally have our moment of silence, I thought it would be awkward for us to leave with our heads bowed on a video screen, but I would be remiss in not reminding everyone to please keep your thoughts and prayer, prayers to Deputy Shannon Bennett from the Broward Sheriff's Office who we lost last week due to this coronavirus. Vice Mayor Parnas, would you please read this in the pledge of allegiance?
I shall. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
Nation under God.
For God.
In the mission of liberty and justice.
It's for all.
Okay, the first item is City of Deerfield Beach Emergency Order 2020-05. It's a motion to ratify public meeting procedures utilizing communications technology during declared public health emergency. Commissioners, you may recall that the last city commission meeting, you passed a resolution authorizing the city manager to arrange for the city commission meetings using electronic means during health emergencies and to promulgate certain rules of procedure for conducting these meetings. Since that time, I should also note that an executive order was issued by the governor that explicitly provides for these meetings to be held utilizing communications media technology. So the city manager did what you authorized him to do and issued an emergency order, Emergency Order 2020-05, which is in the backup to your agenda for this item, adopting procedures that were followed that deal with notice, public comment, and minutes, things of that nature. And so this item is just to ratify those procedures so we can proceed with the meeting in this manner. And then just as a preview, because we're ratifying this emergency order this way, I'm going to have a slight change. I don't need a ratification later on in item number nine, but I'll talk about it when we get there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions before we move forward?
Not here.
All right. Mr. Soroka, do we need to have public comment on this? Anthony?
He's on mute.
He has your hands up on.
If I hit mute, I have to wait for the city clerk to unmute me.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I suggest that you call for public comment on the action item because anybody has any.
City clerk, do we have anyone online?
For this item, no, we do not.
Okay, do we have anyone emailed in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the, close this meeting to the public, portion to the public. Commissioner? We're looking for a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak, second from Vice Mayor Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those. Passes unanimously. Just for clarification on that, Mr. Soroka, did you need a roll call on that or was that sufficient?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's sufficient. There was no expenditure of funds specifically authorized by that item.
All right. Next, we have our approval of our city commission meeting minutes for our regular city commission meeting of the 17th, 2020. Acknowledgement, if we could have a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Vice Mayor Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Our acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes for our non-uniformed pitch-in board meeting for February 2020, our Hillsborough Inlet District Meeting Minutes from January 27th, 2020, February 24th, 2020. Move for a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak, second by Vice Mayor Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we have our approval of our agenda tonight for the regular city commission meeting for April 7th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Parnas. Mr. Soroka?
Yes, we're now at the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address and may speak.
I'm sorry, Anthony, sorry to interrupt. We didn't get a voice vote on that one.
Oh.
You had a motion and a second. Can I have a voice vote, please, for the.
For the approval of the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address and may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. All remarks made by the public at a commission meeting on an agenda item should wait for that agenda item when it's called. This is the portion of public comment for items that are not on the agenda that you want to discuss. And we offered in the notice of this meeting multiple means for the public to provide public comment, including email, including audio. And I think that there was a decision that we would do the call in, the call-ins first, and then followed by any email comments that we've gotten. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Is that how you wanted to proceed?
Yeah. City clerk, do we have anyone online?
We do not have any hands raised, sir.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move forward then with any written comments that have come in?
Yes, sir. We have a written comment from Nancy Rundeman, address is 1631 Riverview Road. And she says, thank you for working so hard to keep the citizens of Deerfield Beach safe. The entire planet has been forever changed. My hope is that we can return to what we have once known as normal. I look forward to enjoying the crystal blue waters of our beach soon.
Thank you very much. Not seeing anyone online, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public then. Move forward.
Okay, we're now on the consent portion of the agenda. I think there's three items in the cover because of the public comment issue. Mr. Mayor, I don't know what the commission's pleasure is. If you want me to just go ahead and go through the three items individually.
I would prefer, and if my colleagues agree, I'd like to move forward just each individual item quickly as opposed to waiting to see if someone wants to comment. It might be a little difficult to do that. So if we can handle them individually, that'd be fine.
No objection.
Commissioner Preston, you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Parnas, Commissioner Hudak?
No problems.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, great. Item number two is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving the award of request for qualifications number 20-17-PC for fleet maintenance and repair services to the responsive firms authorizing execution of continuing contracts with the nine responsive firms for services on an as needed basis and providing for an effective date.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that care to comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, any mail-ins?
No, sir.
All right, close it to the public. Commission?
I have a question.
Commissioner?
Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you very much, sir. The question I have in reading it, how, from what I see, we're going to allow all nine companies bid for this service an opportunity to do the maintenance on said machines. How are we going to determine which unit gets or which contractor gets which, which unit? How is that going to be done?
Mayor, I can address that comment if you, if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, City Commission, David Santucci, city manager. The way in which this is working, the reason why this, this contract is before you and we're asking for it to be approved is that there are instances when we have overflow of work that cannot be efficiently performed by our existing fleet staff. So in those cases where there is more work than there are the resources within the fleet department, we need to rely on outside sources to assist us simply because we need to make sure our vehicles are up and running to ensure that our workers are out there working. So this is not a contract to replace anything that is existing. This is simply for overflow and a recognition of the fact that our, we continue to have troubles to recruit and retain qualified mechanics in fleet division. So the way in which this, so that, that's why we're putting this before you. How this will work is we are pre-qualifying all nine of these, of these, these auto repair places. In the instances where we have a vehicle that has a repair that cannot be handled by the in-staff folks, then each one of them will have the opportunity to provide a bid on the repairs that need to be done. And then it'll be awarded based off of the price.
Commissioner Drosky, is your hand up?
I had a question that was not clear to me based upon the backup information regarding how the overflow work was going to be assigned, but that was just answered by the city manager. So I'm, I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Please don't forget to hit the hand button on the, on the screen. Commissioner Preston?
Yes, I'm trying, I'm trying to. Okay, there we go. Raise hand?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay. Um, this is a, is an issue that as I was going through the backup, I was very, very concerned with this. And this is a problem that we must solve. This is one of our more larger divisions in the city. And it is clear to me that we don't really have a handle on this because of what the city manager just said. It's a difficulty in getting recruitment. We have, according to the backup, approximately 250 vehicles. But of those 250 vehicles, we must assume that at some point, any of them or all of them may need some repair. And, and we need to be able to deal with that. We can't even determine the fiscal impact simply because it's a case-by-case basis according to our backup. And so I would ask my colleagues now for all of us to consider that this is something that we must embrace ourselves with dealing with this so that we at some point can really, you know, solve this, this issue. There is a lot of qualified people that are out there. There are people that are looking for job, young people. And, and, and. And so that it is important that we, that we look to solve this, 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 this situation. And I know that it said in the backup for two years, we've been unable to solve this problem. But I'd like for you, all of you, my colleagues, to consider creating a city fleet maintenance, repair, recruitment program. And what I'm proposing is that, that we would have some communication with Deerfield Beach High School, then Broward County High School, to have an open recruitment to identify seniors, people that are coming out of high school that might be able to fit, to fit a criteria that we would put in front of them. And these young people would be viable candidates to become maintenance workers, mechanics. Also, we should talk with JM family. I've gone to several of the JM graduation programs of people that go through their program. And I went over the other day to talk to someone about, to see if there was an overflow of people. Other words, people that were not employed and that were available. But there was no one over on the grounds for me to speak to. But if we spoke to someone in the GM family and talked with, with Deerfield Beach High School, with the Broward County School Board, this is a problem that we can solve because there are people out there that may not necessarily be cut out for college, but they are bright people and can be trained. And what I'm looking at is that like, you know, a Saturday, Sunday program, going through that for a period of time until they get the necessary qualifications and then, and then can be put to work in our program. And I would like some comment on this.
I, I think it's an outstanding idea. I think working with the Jim Moran Automotive Training Center that we have right here in Deerfield Beach, which I've had the good fortune to tour. I think they do an excellent job. And that is a partnership that obviously I think can bear a lot of fruit, but I think it's a great idea to include the high schools as well. So I think it's a great idea. Commissioner Hudak, I see your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I, I have, you know, in a previous life, you know, I've worked for UPS, I've worked for Hertz Rent-A-Car, and the hardest position to fill is a diesel mechanic. And a diesel mechanic is completely different from an automotive mechanic as well. And automotive mechanics are very difficult to find as well. I think it's great to, to reach out to GM, but the skill set that they're teaching is to have individuals work on cars, not necessarily diesel vehicles. So I, I think it's a tremendous program. And I think that's something that we definitely have to look at. But unfortunately, I don't think the JM family's program is going to be conducive to, to filling these positions. I just know that they're very difficult to find.
Okay. Commissioner Drosky, then Mr. Santucci, and then Commissioner Preston.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I've also had the opportunity to take a tour of the JM Y-Tech facility. And it is very impressive what they do to those use and how they train them for their particular programs. So I don't know that we're prepared to make any decisions tonight, but if staff certainly wants to reach out to the Jim Moran Y-Tech and the high schools and see what the options and availabilities are, I think that's a great idea. But we have the Jim Moran program right in our backyard, just down the street that I think we should take advantage of first. They're there, they're being trained second to none. And I think that would be an opportunity to reach out to first before we go too far down, down this road.
Okay. Mr. Santucci and then Commissioner Preston?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to just thank the commission for, for the suggestions. I will say that we have reached out to the JM Family Youth Automotive Training Center. And it is very similar to what said, that it, we are training for, for automotive vehicles and makes it difficult for them to come over into our garage on especially our diesel, our trucks, our CNG and our heavy fleet. But we will, we will stay on top of it and continue to explore possibilities with them as well as other training facilities to find options of getting those who are coming out of high school and maybe in current trade school to make them aware of the opportunities as well as, you know, maybe creating some, some programs where we can have some apprentices, which has been actually pretty successful at the water point, attracting water operators, which is another very difficult position to, to recruit for. So all these options we will continue to explore. And I thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
Commissioner Hudak made a point about the diesel aspect. And I think that, that is a valid point. But the fact that it was still auto mechanics and so that the transition to go from, let's say, working on cars with the tutelage of our people in an, in an apprenticeship program, they, they would easier make that transition, transition as opposed to someone with no background. And so if we, if we continue. If you, if you, if you could, you know, it would be diff, that's okay. I mean, I think you know what I'm saying. It will be easier for them to make that transition simply because they have a background in it. And so if we could, we could do that, it would be good. I want to just also say to my colleagues, recently, I was going to an area in my district and a young man said to me, he said, Commissioner Preston, he says, do you have a job for me? And, you know, we started talking. So, you know, I know that there's a lot of bright people in District One, District Two, Three, and Four, that if they had some guidance, you know, and we point them towards a program that we're creating ourselves, we can solve these problems. This is a problem that we have to solve because when I read in the backup, we cannot determine the fiscal impact. That bothers me. And when we, when I also read that this is a problem that we've been unable to solve. So that means to me that we have to do what we need to do for our, for our city to solve this program because it's one that's not going to go away. Thank you.
Point. Commissioner Hudak?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the apprenticeship program is definitely the way to go. That doesn't resolve the situation that we're facing right now because an apprenticeship program is going to take a couple of years to get up to speed. And I think while we have some great ideas and why I think we all agree that, you know, the, the youth of the city would most benefit from these tremendous opportunities that we still have to solve the issue today. And, and I think I'm going to make a motion to move forward with this issue, but I, I think as, as the city manager said, exploring a way to develop an apprenticeship program and maybe even starting with the individuals who have graduated from the JM family program, you know, offering them some kind of a scholarship, you know, for tools and, and, again, I'm not a mechanic, so I don't know what's involved with regards to the cost of some kind of an apprenticeship like this. But I think it's definitely a path that we should have probably looked at a couple of years ago, but we are where we are now. And I think it's something that we need to seriously consider. We've got a couple of, of mechanics who are extremely senior. And I think it behooves us to be able to put them in a position where they can transfer their knowledge to the next generation. And I think, you know, we've got a lot of programs to try and hire the youth of Deerfield Beach. We've got the, the launch code and the higher Deerfield Beach program. And this is just another program that I think we should definitely look to try to, to move forward with. But again, I'd like to make a motion to, to move this, this resolution forward and then also look at what we can do for, for the future.
Okay, before we move forward with that, we're looking for comment from the public. Is there anyone from the public? I don't see anybody online doing that. Do we have anything emailed in? City clerk?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, I'm going to close it to the public then. We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak, looking for a second.
Second. I, I have a, I have my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Sorry, guys.
All right, Commissioner Preston and Vice Mayor Parnas. Go ahead, Commissioner Preston.
I, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for looking into this. It was something that was on my mind for a long time. And, you know, I'd like to thank you all. And, and just giving your attention to this. And I think that obviously, as you said, Commissioner Hudak, this is something that with the city manager and staff that we can solve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Preston. Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes, I wholly approve of this program. When I went back to school at the Culinary Arts College, we had a mentor program where we did intern at various locations after we finished the course. And that helped us because it was major hotels get work. Because they, you know, if you went to intern at a particular hotel, let's say the Hilton on Sixth Avenue and 53rd Street, if they liked you and you worked well and you were well-trained, they hired you. And so this is a program that will enable our youth to be trained and then go into some sort of internship. And I think that really has to be explored. I wholeheartedly approve.
Well, these are two separate issues, and I think we have a motion in a second to move forward with what we have. But I think we've all
Yes.
made the point to move forward to look into. So at that point, if I could have roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
And number three on the agenda is a resolution to the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida approving the agreement with Broward County to provide cost share support of a nature scape irrigation service within the water quality service area and authorize Broward County to conduct specific technical activities as part of landscape irrigation system evaluations, authorizing execution of the agreement with Broward County and providing for an effective date.
Anyone from the public who, who's emailed in? City clerk?
Yes, sir. We have Dr. Jennifer Harado from Broward County.
Okay. She's emailed in or she on the line now?
She was supposed to be on the line.
Okay. I don't see her on the line at this point.
Dr. Harado, if you could recognize by raising your hand, please? If you're on, okay, hold on, I'm receiving a chat.
Okay.
Okay. I have her.
Okay. Dr. Harado?
Yes, it says connecting to audio, so we're waiting on her to connect.
City manager, while we're waiting for her, do we have any comments that you have?
Sure, thank you. This is a supplemental program that the city has been involved with for quite some time. Broward County comes out, they do check our irrigation system in various locations throughout the city. They change up each location, identify leaks in its water conservation measure. It also helps with our, with a certain permitting and licensing requirements that we have and provides points towards those certain requirements.
Okay, Dr. Harado, were you there?
It's still trying to connect. She's under the name of Erin.
Okay.
I'll try to talk a little bit more about it while we're still waiting. We had this current, we're currently in an agreement with them and it started back in 2015. So this is a new, will be a new agreement for another, another five-year period, I believe.
Okay. City clerk, is there anyone else from the public to comment on this?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public portion to be heard. It looks like Dr. Harado is still having issues. Commissioner, can we move forward with this without hearing from Dr. Harado or would you prefer to wait?
It looks, she's chatting with me. It looks like she wants to talk about the agreement that was established back in 2005.
Okay.
Okay, but that's all she's typed so far.
Any luck?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner?
I have my hand raised.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Preston, go right ahead.
I was going to ask you, Mayor, is it, would it, would it be okay if, because we're having these difficulties just to move ahead?
No, she, she's okay with you. No, she, she's okay with you guys moving ahead. She did advise that she was here to answer any questions that you may have, but it seems like Dave has already covered whatever you guys needed.
Okay.
So she's okay with you moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Hudak. Looking for a second. Second by Vice Mayor Parnas. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if, if you don't mind, if you can get a voice vote on that last one, because I believe there is an expenditure called for in that agreement.
My apologies, sir, that was muted. No, that, that is correct. If we could have roll call on that one, please. Madam Clerk, we have roll call, you're muted.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four is a resolution, the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the award of request for proposals number twenty dash zero five dash JW for citywide tree trimming removal and maintenance services to Southern Arbor Services, Inc., authorizing execution of the agreement with Southern Arbor Services, Inc. and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Santucci, do you have any comments on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is an annual contract that we, uh, we have established. This is, uh, a new procurement for that contract that was done through an R, a request for proposals process. Um, we had put this out to approximately, I think, forty-eight, uh, prospective vendors. We received three responses. Uh, the number one ranked proposer, Southern Arbor Services, uh, was, uh, unanimously the number one ranked proposer. And I believe that they were also the lowest cost, if I remember correctly. Yes, they were, the lowest cost on the bid. Um, this contract is needed for two reasons. Um, it's really going to be needed in the immediate, for immediates, the immediacy of hurricane season. So tree trimming occurs, um, twice throughout the year, usually once in before hurricane season and then once again um, in, in the wintertime months. So, uh, this is an important contract for us to have in place. The, um, the recommendation is for award of the contract.
Thank you. Um, madam clerk, do we have anyone? I don't see anyone online. Do we have any, uh, emails come in?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to close it to the public then, commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Hudak, second from, uh, Vice Mayor Parnas. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Item number five is a resolution, the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the special event permit application submitted by Blue Water Movement, Inc. For the Saltwater Slam and Showdown at Sullivan Park, sixteen thirty-three River Road on August fifteenth, twenty twenty, from four PM to eight PM, providing for cancellation of the event if necessary for public health and safety concerns and providing for an effective date.
City manager, do you have any comments on this?
I do, and if, and if I could, I'd like to just speak to the next two items in, in, in general first before I speak specifically to, uh, item number five. I hope everyone heard the last portion of the city attorney's reading of the, uh, resolution, which really, these two events are optimistically, um, contingent upon, you know, where we're at uh, at the time that these events are slated to take place. So I know it seems a little odd that we are bringing forth a special event. Um, here we are in, in, in April, you know, and with, with all the measures that we have in place with social distancing and, and, and those sorts of things, but both applicants for both of these items are well aware that these are contingent upon, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic and when certain restrictions may be lifted. As it applies to number five, um, we were approached by, by Blue, Blue Water Movement, Inc. To host, um, their weigh-ins here at Sullivan Park. Um, this is something that usually was taking place in Pompano Beach. Uh, they saw our location. This is a very, um, very well-known fishing tournament. And, um, we agreed to give it a try. They do this three times a year. I think they do it in April, June, and then at this particular date in August. Um, so, you know, in talking to them about this, we said, okay, let's, let's go ahead and see if we can, um, get on your August date to have this here in the city. Uh, make sure it's a good fit for you, for your anglers, for, uh, for the city as well and, and, and give it a shot. You will notice that, um, there is a, a, a recommendation of, of not approving this item for the in-kind fees. That is always the case for special events where, um, we have not appropriately budgeted, budgeted for these things. So, um, that's why there's, there's that recommendation.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone from the public, uh, online about this that has emailed in?
No, sir.
Okay, and I don't see anyone online comment as well. I'm going to close it to the public, Commissioner Hudak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I actually attended this event last year when it was in Pompano and I was very, very impressed at the organization and professionalism of the, the, the organizers and the event. My biggest concern at that time was, uh, the residents of Hillsborough Landings, one and two. Uh, because it, it is, it, it's an event that, that brings a lot of people. Um, I spoke with those residents as well as, uh, the president of the Homeowners Association. And to my surprise, they're actually in favor of, uh, having this event there. So, um, is, since they are in favor of it, it's something that, that I would like to, to see happen as well. Again, cautiously optimistic that we are over this, this pandemic and we're able to, uh, move forward with our social gatherings.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, uh, well, Commissioner Hudak, is that a motion?
I will make a motion, sure. A motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak, second from Commissioner Preston. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution, the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the special event permit application submitted by Lighthouse Capital Partners, Inc. Doing business as Dixie Divers for the fifteenth annual Dixie Divers Peer Cleanup Special Event taking place at two hundred northeast twenty-first avenue on June thirteenth, twenty twenty, from eight AM to twelve thirty PM. And a night dive special event taking place on June twelfth, twenty twenty, from seven thirty PM to nine thirty PM. Providing for cancellation of the event if necessary for public health and safety concerns and providing for an effective date.
Is there anyone from the public that I see online? Is there anybody that emailed in? City clerk?
No emails were received and no online requests to speak.
I'm going to close it to the public then. Commissioner Hudak, you have your hand raised?
Yes, sir. Uh, again, I attended this event last year when it was held by Dixie Divers. Uh, and it's, it's another tremendous event that not only benefits the community, uh, but benefits the environment. Uh, I know last year they collected over, you know, two thousand pounds of trash from underneath, um, the, the pier when we were going for the Guinness Book of World Records event, uh, which we, uh, still hold, by the way, as far as I know. Um, so I, this is another event that I, I think not only benefits the community, uh, but benefits, uh, you know, Deerfield Beach and our environment. Uh, and it is something that, um, uh, I would like to see move forward. So, um, we'd like to make a motion to approve as well.
Yeah, we have a motion from Commissioner Hudak.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Preston. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak, I'm sorry, Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Okay, item number seven is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, authorizing city manager David Santucci, Chief Financial Officer Stephanie Tinsley and Assistant City Manager Angela, uh, Ditter, uh, Ditteron, sorry, Angela, to execute checks on behalf of the city, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone online or anybody who's emailed in for this item?
Uh, no emails and no one online.
Okay, I'm going to close it to the public then, commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from, uh, Vice Mayor Parnas, second from Commissioner Preston. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight is, uh, an emergency ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Article Two Civil Emergencies of Chapter Thirty, Emergency Services, to provide for additional extensions of a state of local emergency, providing for conflict severability, publication, and an effective date. And Mr. Mayor, if you could recognize me, if it's okay with you to give a brief explanation, um, for this item.
Yes, uh, Mr. Sirok, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so in our code, it provides for the state of local emergency to be declared by the mayor, and that's good for seven-day period. It also provides for the extension of that seven-day period for an additional thirty days by the city commission, but it's a one-time thirty-day extension. At the last commission meeting, the commission did, uh, extend the state of local emergency for that thirty-day period. However, that only gets us through April seventeenth, uh, and there's no additional meeting between now and then. And I think you've seen from all of the executive orders and the guidance from the feds and the state that this is intended to last longer than that. So in order to effectuate a change to the city code that allows for additional extensions beyond April seventeenth, um, this emergency ordinance is before you. It can be done in one reading, um, via an emergency ordinance pursuant to state law, and that is hence why there is a four-fifths, uh, vote requirement on this one. And then I would just mention the item, the very next item, item number nine, is the resolution actually effectuating the extension uh, if the commission passes the emergency ordinance. And I can answer any questions that you may have on that, but the bottom line is this is providing for you to extend the state of local emergency beyond April seventeen. Uh, currently, your code wouldn't allow without it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Uh, I believe I have to make sure that this isn't, uh, anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close it to the public. We have a motion from Commissioner Preston.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Parnas. We have roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes. Mr. Sirok, our next item?
I got him.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, resolution, the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, extending the state, state of local emergency regarding COVID nineteen until May seventeen, twenty twenty, ratifying and approving all emergency orders and actions taken by the city manager concerning or related to COVID nineteen emergency and authorizing the city manager to take appropriate actions, providing an effective date. And this is the item I mentioned at the outset of the meeting. We take a look at this and, and we don't need you to ratify and approve all the emergency orders and actions taken by the city manager. At this point, uh, we had you ratify the, um, the procedures at the beginning for this, uh, for this motion. Um, so I would suggest and recommend that you just remove that language. Whoever does, uh, move to pass this, that they make a motion to approve it, uh, without the ratification and approval, uh, language, as it's not needed at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, do we have anyone from the public online right now? I don't see anything, anyone who's emailed in, city clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, um, I'm going to close it to the public then. Uh, Commissioner Hudak, you have your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the question I have is, is until May seventeen, uh, right now, as you know, the federal guidelines are until April thirtieth. Um, there is language that allows us to, to amend this so that it ends April thirtieth, should God bless us with this pandemic, pandemic going away. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. You do have the ability. The commission does have the ability to terminate it early, uh, sure the circumstances warrant, and the commission choose to do so.
Thank you. I'll second the motion then.
Yeah, so we have a motion from Commissioner Preston. Uh, we also have, uh, before we get to that, this is the item that, uh, addresses the PP and E also.
Uh, the, the PP and E was addressed, uh, via an emergency order, um, that was issued by the manager today, but you could certainly discuss it as part of this item or, or during your comments, uh, separately.
I'll wait till the end to bring that up then. Uh, we have a motion, a second, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
Okay, comments by administration and legal?
Good evening. Um, yes, I do have, I just have, uh, I would just like to recap, uh, for the, the city commissions. As the last time we met, so much has changed, uh, over the course of, of these three to four weeks. Um, you know, we are in a, a much different position today than where we thought we would be, even back at that last in-person meeting that we, that we had there in March. Um, you know, currently, we are at just under fifteen thousand cases for Florida. The, approximately twenty-two hundred cases here in Broward. That's certainly much better than some of the other, uh, county jurisdictions a- around us, uh, thank goodness. And we are relatively, we were seeing relatively, um, low numbers here in the city of Deerfield Beach. Uh, several orders have been enacted, uh, at the state level, the county level, um, and of course, at the city level as well. It has been extraordinarily difficult to keep up with the state in regards to their emergency orders. But more importantly, uh, deciphering at times what those things mean. Um, I want to, uh, I want to really take the time here to thank our city attorney who has worked tirelessly, uh, through all of those emergency orders, um, crafting them themselves for the city and working with, uh, his counterparts throughout the county and within his own firm to, um, provide the guidance that, that I needed along with staff, you, to, uh, get the information out to the public. And speaking of that, um, the information that has gone out to the public, I'm very proud of the way in which we've handled that uh, through our public affairs and marketing office, especially, um, Rebecca Medina and, and her, and her, uh, employees over there, Jenny and Dave, uh, as well as the rest of, of the workforce who has had to adjust to what is now a new norm, uh, for, for the way in which we work. And it has been, um, a, a whirlwind of a ride, uh, to say the least, in an extent that could never have been imagined. Um, we are used to operating in emergency events that look us in the face, hit us hard, leave in a few days, and then we pick up the pieces and we move on. And that's, that's, those are the policies that we have in place and the plans we have in place. But something to this magnitude could never be dreamed of, um, not by anyone. And the fact that you heard the city attorney say earlier that even our own code does not contemplate an emergency to last this long gives you an indication of the magnitude of what we're dealing with and, and the fact that this is really an unprecedented event. So we have, uh, been very active with law enforcement, uh, fire rescue, ocean rescue, code enforcement, to manage all of the orders and the restrictions that are in place. I want to thank all of those first responders who are doing a tremendous job for this organization. Uh, they are working under extremely difficult conditions. Chief Pelletary, Captain Brimlow, Captain Brown, um, Calvin Giordano and associations, association with, um, code enforcement. I appreciate all the hard work and effort that they are doing. And that's not to say that the rest of the workforce isn't doing a tremendous job. I just wanted to note some of the ones that are on the front lines there. So, but I do thank all of the staff. Continuing on, I'd like to just say that we have had to make tremendous amount of adjustments to our workforce, both operationally and, and from a, from a pay perspective. And first and foremost, we had to implement many telecommuting policies. We had to get the infrastructure in place. We had to get the hardware and the resources in place. We were very successful at that. We have deployed a number of new laptops, increased our VPN resources, our security resources and our bandwidth throughout the entire network. We have also placed another large order for computers so that we can increase the mobility of our workforce so that they can telecommute more than where we were just a month ago, which at that time, the city did not have a telecommuting policy at all. I think this is going, some good is going to come out of this, quite frankly, in the way in which we interact as businesses, whether in the private sector and/or government, and I think we're seeing that now even by this meeting today. We are working on a, on a rotating basis at this point. We have as many employees telecommuting as possible. We have other employees who are working, working one day and then off on another, and then working maybe the following day and off on another. This rotational shift of personnel is meant for two distinct reasons. The first one, first and foremost, is the safety of the employees to abide by the CDC guidelines to create the social distancing measures that we need to have in place in order to preserve the human resources within the organization and to avoid an outbreak within the workforce. It's important to think about the fact that if we did not create these, these measures, these operational reductions, that an outbreak could occur within the organization and affect essential city functions. That will not happen and that has not happened. Additionally, we continue to maintain all of our essential, all the essential functions of the government to include water, wastewater, solid waste, public safety. None of those services have been interrupted. Unlike a normal hurricane event in which we rely on our emergency pay policy, we had to create something at the time, back in early March, that would address this particular emergency. It is different than our emergency pay policy, which provides for time and a half to all employees who are working, while the employees who are non-essential stay home. They get paid their regular salary. That's obviously not feasible in this sort of situation. And at the time, when we were crafting the new emergency pay policy, we knew at that point in time that we were looking at an event that would last somewhere between April fifteenth to April thirtieth at the latest. And that was based off of the existing closures that were taking place and the closures of the schools and the information that we were getting from experts at the time, at that time. We're obviously looking at a very different situation today. I realize that. I think, I think the workforce realizes that. I think the representatives of the employees realize that. We're looking at probably more like a June timeframe of when we'll hopefully get back to some sort of normal. And that's based off of real data that shows when Florida will peak in the number of cases, which today is around April fifteenth. New York has been one of those states who has been hit one of the hardest, and they're actually peaking right now in the number of cases of the next three days. Nationwide, the peak on cases is looking to be consistent with the state of Florida, which is around that April fifteenth timeframe. So as we realize these things and we get a better handle on, on how long of an event we're looking at, and we also see the economic impact as this thing continues on, we are adjusting operations and personnel policies as we move along, and we are currently doing all of that. I just want to make the commission aware. I have nothing else to add unless there are questions for me.
Not seeing any comments from the commission. We can move forward.
And I don't really have any other comments except to echo the city manager's sentiment in that this has been a very interesting time, especially as the local government attorney. I don't know that I could have guessed that I would be holding, helping hold a virtual meeting with you all, but I just want to say that it's, you know, it's my pleasure to serve the city and to work with you all through this, this, this interesting time. With that, I think we're at city commission business. And item number ten is consideration to approve voting delegates to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Board of Directors for Broward League of Cities.
I don't believe there's anyone from the public to comment on this. I'm gonna close it to the public then.
I'm sorry, Mayor Gantz, can we, can we pause for a moment? We seem to have lost Vice Mayor Parnas. We're going, yeah, we're gonna try and see if we can get him back though, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Do we be sending IT over there or Chief Pelletary? We can't hear you, Samantha.
I'm actually talking with Commissioner Parnas right now.
Okay, good.
Here. Here, let me. Well, just. Commissioner Parnas. Okay, he, he lost internet connection, but he is going to call in.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we know where he's calling in? Okay.
Mayor Gantz, Commissioner Drosky has his hand raised.
I see that.
All right.
Commissioner Drosky, just like, go ahead.
It's for item number ten.
Okay, go right ahead.
I'm your current voting delegate to the Broward League of Cities, so I would respectfully request my colleagues to reappoint me for that role for the upcoming year. There's several big issues that the Broward League of Cities has been working on for the past year that we're going to continue to be working on for the upcoming year. The biggest two issues are the school resource officers, which is a big issue to us and to make sure that that is equitably distributed, you know, equally amongst the cities as to how that is funded. And then also the current recycling issue. There's a task force that's studying the various options for the cities to go forward with respect to, do we do this as a group? Do we go it alone? That's being studied as well. So these are two important issues that are going to directly affect the city of Deerfield Beach. I've been involved for the last year and I would like to continue to be involved for the upcoming year. So I would respectfully request that you reappoint me as the voting delegate to the Broward League of Cities.
Okay. Do we have anybody online who would like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna close it to the public. I know we're still waiting on Commissioner Parnas. Commissioner, does anyone have an issue with having Commissioner Drosky continue on in this role?
Does that, Mr. Sirok, does that require a motion?
Yes, Commissioner. To effectuate, to effectuate it, yeah, there should be a motion of the commission to.
Well, then I would make a motion to reappoint Commissioner Drosky to, as the voting delegate to the League of Cities.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston and a second from Commissioner Hudak. I'm gonna wait one more moment. Are we still waiting for Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor to come on board?
Yes, we are. And also, I wanted to let you know, we do need to have two alternates, a first and second.
Okay.
I will volunteer to be a first alternate.
Okay. Are we looking for a second alternate?
I believe Vice Mayor was the second alternate last year. I don't know if he wants to continue or not.
Commissioner Preston, would you amend your motion to include Commissioner Hudak as the first alternate and Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Parnas as the second alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we vote, I just would like to say that that when we have different things come before the city, it's really important that the proper representation is there. Commissioner Drosky asked to be reappointed. I just want to make it, make the point that because a person wishes to do something doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be in the best interest of the city. But it is without a doubt that I see the seriousness that Commissioner Drosky takes in this. I commend him. And I know that the city has the top representative in any of the issues as it relates to the League of Cities, and that's why I, I made that motion, not as a matter of just formality, but because he is qualified to do so, and I know that he would represent the city well.
I will say this, it is not without a great deal of extra personal sacrifices. We know that that's what we end up doing in this role. But I know that Commissioner Drosky, it eats up a great deal of his time and we appreciate all the hard work he's done on it. So I think at this point, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote. I know we're still waiting for Commissioner Parnas or Vice Mayor Parnas, but when it comes to his time to comment, we can make sure we wait for him, but let's move this forward if that's all right.
Okay. Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes.
The next time is comments by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay, I'm gonna start with District One.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I want to start off my, my comments with condolences to BSO as well as to the family of Deputy Shannon Bennett. Along with Commissioner Drosky when we attended the elementary school walk last year. And I can say that BSO was better for having him in their ranks. He is going to be sorely missed, and he is a Deerfield Beach part of our community, even though he may not live here in Deerfield Beach, and he will sorely miss. And I think it's vitally important that our residents continue with the diligence with regards to protecting themselves, protecting their families, protecting the community from this deadly virus. As the city manager said earlier, right now Florida has over fourteen thousand cases. And the state of Florida has seen two-hundred-and-eighty-three deaths, which is a rise of forty-seven deaths from yesterday. So those are some pretty solemn numbers. Fort Lauderdale has four-hundred-and-seventy-three cases. Pompano Beach, ninety-seven cases. Boca Raton, a hundred-and-ninety-eight cases. Delray Beach, a hundred-and-fifty-three cases. Deerfield Beach has thirty-five, and that is still too many. I want to commend our city manager. I want to commend the staff as well as our first responders in everything that they are doing to keep our community safe. I want to extend a tremendous amount of pride and thankfulness to our residents for taking this seriously. We are all frustrated. I know we get calls still about why the beach is closed, why community pools are closed and such. But what we are doing is working, and we need to make sure that we keep the, the, the end game in sight and just continue doing what you're doing because it is vitally important. A couple of other things, this Saturday is my Saturday hours. I will still hold them, but it'll be telephonically. So if any of the residents need to get ahold of me or want to schedule a meeting with me, please reach out to City Hall and we can do it telephonically. Also, Census twenty twenty is still going on. You will have probably received envelopes in the mail to go ahead and complete the census. It is vitally important that you do do that. The first envelope you receive probably gave you a code that allows you to go to the website, Census twenty twenty, in order to complete your census, you have to include that code, and it takes less than five minutes to do that. You receive the second mail where you can fill out a paper form and then mail it to the Census Bureau. You can also call the Census Bureau at eight-four-four-three-three-zero-twenty-twenty, and you can speak to an individual and go ahead and get the census done that way. Cases in Florida are doubling every three days. The city manager mentioned earlier, we have not reached the peak. By the time we have our next commission meeting, which is in two weeks, the state of Florida will see over five hundred deaths. So please stay diligent, stay proactive, and please be safe. Thank you very much and good luck to all. That's all my comments for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudak. Before we move on, Mr. Santucci, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to inform the commission and the city clerk, I do have Commissioner Parnas on the call through my cellphone. So Commissioner Parnas, please confirm that you had, you were able to hear Commissioner Hudak.
I have. I heard every word.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. District Two, Commissioner Preston.
I'd like to start my comments also, as did Commissioner Hudak, with condolences for Officer Shannon Bennett, and to actually die from something that we're all dealing with right now, this COVID-19 pandemic. I hope that at some point that we're able to get back to, you know, what we call enormacy, understanding that there's going to be a tremendous challenge with that. That being said, I would like to thank our city staff for a lot of the things that they're, they, that they're doing and the manner in which they have handled business. I'd like to start with the city clerk's office. You know, the, one of the biggest things that we have to do is make sure that we're communicating. And I don't know if you remember, but it was one of my comments at the last city commission meeting that this, that what we're doing right now, in fact, may happen. And it did. But now you have to actually get people trained and get them to feel comfortable. with, you know, of, of having a decent meeting. We might take this for granted. This is the first time that I've ever been a part of anything like this. And I will tell you, it was challenging in a lot of ways at, at first. You know, dealing with computers and dealing with a lot of different aspects of computers is very challenging in a lot of ways. Under the leadership of City Clerk Samantha Gillett, I went through a training exercise. I was taken through that step by step. And I was made to feel, you know, confident, which is not easy to do. I'm challenging in a lot of ways, but she did, she did a good job. And, you know, in, in, in making sure, it was actually Heather and City Clerk that took me through the training. I didn't know what to expect and it turned out really nice. And then this past Monday, I had another one. And so I was good to go for tonight. So I'd like to thank City Clerk Gillett and her staff. Nice job. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. The city manager has kept me updated on all that is happening. I mean, I feel like the most information that's out there that a commissioner needs to know and is necessary that we know that. And I know some would say that's his job to make sure you're informed. Well, let me just tell you, I'm, I know all of us are informed and I think he and his staff are doing a good job. Nobody ever thought we would ever be in this situation, but we are. I go through the city at, for, for different reasons. If I'm going out to the store or whatever the case may be, going looking at something that a constituent may have called me. And I see our city workers working so hard. All of us should take pride in this city from a lot of different levels to know that the employees that are representing this city internally, from the administrative office to those people that are performing the tasks that keep this city running. They're doing a good job. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for, you know, your attention to these matters. I actually feel an air of confidence because you all are in the position, you know, people don't always have the confidence in elected officials like they should have and sometimes deservedly so. But I will tell you, with all of you that I work with, I am so proud. I feel confident and I feel as much as possible safe. I will tell you that the, our city attorney has called me at different times, not just during working time, just if I need to know something, he calls me. And lets me know what's going on. I think that this kind of communication is important. And I think that when a resident asks you, you know, what's going on, that you need to be able to respond in a confident manner. Because we are just seriously, I mean, I mean, people are right on the verge of panic. People are dying from this. This is real. This is real. And so when you have leadership that is guiding and, and stealing confidence, it's a good thing. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin my comments as well with the condolences to not only Deputy Bennett's family, but also to the BSO family for such a terrible loss. It's always difficult when it's anybody that you lose in law enforcement, but especially somebody when it's someone from your own family. And I appreciate Commissioner Hudak showing that, that picture taken from the walk to school. It was very, very moving and it's a loss that is, affects all of us. And it's very difficult, but as Commissioner Hudak has in the background or had in the background, be strong. I want to thank the residents of the city and in my district in particular for adhering to the CDC guidelines, for following the instructions of law enforcement. I think very, we're doing it very well here in Deerfield Beach and I want to congratulate our residents. It's a very difficult time, but I think that everyone is doing their part. Everyone is following the recommendations and we will be better for it. There's a lot of pain in the meantime. But it is something that we will definitely be better for in the, in the long run. There's going to be a lot of kudos to, to pass out through this entire situation. So I think it's a little premature to do that. But the head of the ship is the city manager who's been guiding us. And I'd like to congratulate him, you know, on these very difficult, you know, times and unprecedented. There's no script for the situation that we are in. There's no playbook to follow. And it's very difficult. And so it's basically, not only does every day change, but every hour changes. And there are different times where different aspects come into play and it's very challenging. I know that I've been a vocal critic of his behind the scenes regarding the, the pay policy. But I know that is something that is being addressed and can be tweaked, you know, going forward. And so I think it's his ability to adapt and change as the situation is moving that has got a lot of respect. But keep up the hard work. There's a long way to go in this fight and it is a fight. And, and so I want to just, all of my colleagues, you know, continue to do what you're doing. The residents are watching us and I think
Yes.
that we are doing, we are putting our best foot forward. There is some good news actually in, in all of this. You know, the state legislature did pass its budget recently and the city of Deerfield Beach was the recipient, assuming there's no veto from the governor's office. This year we have the recipient of two grants. One for $195,150, which is 100% of the ask that we were asking for, for the Alzheimer's daycare center. That was approved by the Florida Legislature. And in addition to that, our pre to school, preschool redevelopment project was granted $250,000 by the state as well. That's almost $450,000 in projects awarded to the city of Deerfield Beach. I have high confidence that they will not be vetoed by the governor. And that's a win for the residents of the city of Deerfield Beach. So there is some, some good news in, in all of this. I'd also like to, what's kind of forgotten in all of this, I'd like to, you know, wish everybody in the city of Deerfield Beach a happy Passover and a happy Easter. Passover starts tomorrow and Easter Sunday is this upcoming Sunday. So let's take some time out of this episode, spend some time with family and remember some more important things in the world that are, that are going on. And lastly, I'd like to share with you, you just take me a second to pull it up. It's a poem that's widely circulating on the, on the internet, but it was created specifically for this pandemic by an educator from Wisconsin. And you may have heard it by now, but it's called Take Home. So I'd like to read that and that will be my closing comments for this meeting. And I'm not a poet, so pardon me as I read it, but take these words, you know, seriously. The poem is called Take Heart by Kitty O'Meara. And the people stayed home and read books and listened and rested and exercised and made art and played games and learned new ways of being and were still and listened more deeply. Some meditated, some prayed, some danced. Some met their shadows. And the people began to think differently and the people healed. And in the absence of people living in ignorant, dangerous, mindless and heartless ways, the earth began to heal too. And when the danger passed and the people joined together again, they grieved their losses and made new choices and dreamed new images and created new ways to live and heal the earth fully as they had been healed themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drosky. Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes, I'm here. Let me first thank everybody for their efforts to save lives in our city. People, I've gotten many, many calls, why can't the pools be open? Because it endangers everybody's life. Why can't the beach be open? They're not closed for punishment. They're closed to save people's lives. It's a very serious disease. I have lost people that I know. Disease doesn't know age, doesn't know religion, it doesn't know color. It's a killer and we have to take precautions. So for those of you out there that hear me, please understand that everybody that works for this city is working to keep you and your family safe and alive. The president the other day said, well, if we only have 100,000 dead, that'll be good. No, I don't think that's great. I also want to take a minute to thank Target. The one we have here in Deerfield on Powerline. I went there the other day and I was told when I walked in, go, don't touch that wagon. It hasn't been sterilized yet. Take the ones on this side. We are wiping every one of them down with disinfectant. Two, when you get to the cashier, you must stay 10 feet behind the person in front of you. Only one person near the cashier. After that person leaves, the cashier wipes everything down with disinfectant from the conveyor belt to where you put your credit card in. Everything is wiped down with disinfectant. They are making every effort to keep you safe and I commend them for that. I have not phoned out in other chain stores. So thank you, Target, for trying to save lives. Other than that, be safe, everybody. I'm very proud of the people I work with and the effort they're making to keep you safe. That's our job. That's our goal. Keep you alive, keep you well, so that you can enjoy the rest of your life without fear. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Like many of us, the, the loss here i- is, is real. This is a real thing that's affecting all of us. The loss of Deputy Bennett. As Mr. Rogers says, you look for the helpers. I know that's what those kids did at Deerfield Beach Elementary School. He was beloved by the children, by his colleagues, by the teachers and the staff at Deerfield Beach Elementary School and by the parents. And this has touched home for us. Last week I lost my primary care doctor. The last 18 years, Dr. Alex Shu, who passed away from the virus. This is very serious, unprecedented. And I think our staff has done a great job of trying to handle something where there is no playbook for it. And, and I too am glad that we have the flexibility to reevaluate some of the things we put in place, the employee pay that I know we're going to be making adjustments on and, and some of these issues. All of this can be worked out. It's money. And, and that can be replaced. What can't be replaced is human life. One of the things I asked the city manager and the city attorney and as part of the emergency policy that we put in place today, personal protection, protective equipment, I am very disappointed that so many people out there feel that it's okay to dispose of their plastic, their, their gloves, their masks right in the parking lot. As if it's okay for it to become someone else's problem. Part of this emergency ordinance that we put in place is to address this. We can go after them with strong enforcement and up to a $500 fine. And I, I think this is something that needed, unfortunately shouldn't have to be done. And we shouldn't have to remind people of this, but if you've been in any parking lot in any place, whether it's this city or others, you'll see that it's a problem. And I am disappointed about that because we are better than that. This isn't a time for politics. This isn't a time for partisanship and it's not a time for pointing a finger. It's time for all of us to come together. Yes, our numbers right now are under 40 who have been diagnosed in Deerfield Beach. Last Wednesday it was 16. Those numbers will change. And it is our duty to the people that we represent, whether they're visitors or people who live here, to look out for them. And I want to thank our first responders, our staff for the job that they're doing. And just remind everyone that let's support our local businesses as well. You have businesses out there that are taking a hit that is completely unprecedented. And, and I want to thank all of those businesses who have gotten creative and have gone beyond just trying to look out for their own bottom line that have looked out for the community itself. People like Danielle Rossi at Oceans 234, who not only just is doing delivery takeout, but is providing some of the essential materials that have been hard to find, whether it be toilet paper or paper towels or, or just supplying residents with a, a, a different means of being able to get some of the items that they desperately need. You have wonderful businesses out there that are constantly doing the takeout like Casa Maya and Olympic Flame. All of these great restaurants out there, look out for them. Take care of our own here in Deerfield Beach and try to support them as best you can. The main message is, is to be careful and be kind. That's my recommendation for all of us. And that's the one message I hope comes across to all of you here in this city. So thank you and I appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.